Feedback from you guys and when we set up the initial calendar for this year's professional learning, one of the things that came up was school nutrition. A lot tends to have a lot of questions about school nutrition and it is a little different for us as a Title I school district and I know Lisa will get into that a little bit as to what our guidelines are and a lot of things that maybe you as board members don't even know and I know that our public doesn't know. So we wanted to make sure to spend some time doing that. Jackson, did you want to add a few things before we call Lisa up?
A couple of things real quick. So, um, one of those things you might not know about Lisa, but you'll find out very quickly, she was cheerleader, okay? And that's what she's great at is pumping up and shake it up is the theme for school nutrition for the last couple of years. And so she certainly shakes it up. Other thing I wanted to point out in addition, just we're glad to have her. She does a great job of, you know, presenting food to y'all and making sure the kids do the best test for the kids at a grade level and finding out what they like. But at the recent state, um, school nutrition conference, she was actually honored as a mentor of the year for the work that she does with her fellow school nutrition directors. So there's a network and they share information and she was honored nominated and honored for that. And we're very proud of that. So please.
Well, my motto is, I don't know a whole lot, but what I do know, I'm happy to show. So I guess that's, that's how that came into play. Thank y'all very much for letting me come in this afternoon and talk about school nutrition. It's a complicated business, but I think, I think I'll be able to explain the most important parts that you kind of hear in the public from parents and students. And so I will hopefully not bore you. I've got about 32 slides on rice and the different types of rice. I start my customer service off with that slide. But you see people's eyes going, really? She's going to talk about, is rice a grain?
Rice, rice.
Rice, rice, famous rice. I mean, that's, and brown rice, wild rice. But we're going to talk about, I love, I came up with this title because it really is the ins and outs and all rounds of school nutrition. The origin of school, uh, of school nutrition started with the National School Lunch Program, which was the National School Lunch Act established by Richard B. Russell and then signed by and put into law by Harry Truman. And what kind of led people to want to do this, the young men that were going to war in World War II were malnourished. And so they saw that there was a need and they needed to establish something governmental, governmental-supported lunch program. So it's to safeguard the health and well-being of the nation's children and to encourage the domestic consumption of nutritious agricultural commodities. That's very important. We also want to support farmers as we're serving food to these malnourished young men going into war. And other foods, by assisting the states through grants and aid and other means in providing an adequate supply of foods and other facilities for establishment, maintenance, operation, expansion of nonprofit school lunch programs. Again, that's an important word right there, nonprofit. Okay, so what were the requirements of the National School Lunch Act? Meals must meet, again, I'm going to stress this word, minimum nutrition standards. Lunches must be available to low-income students at no cost or reduced price without discrimination. That still holds today. Program must be nonprofit. Again, something that we adhere to today. School lunch must use surplus commodities to the extent practical. Schools must report expenditures and receipts to state educational agencies, making sure that the money that they give us is used to purchase the food to provide to the children.
Which is, still happens to be in our honor.
Very much. And several others.
Just out of curiosity about the surplus commodities, do you have opportunity to select which commodity if you are, or is it likely used to be, they just sit there and you have to figure out how to use it?
Excellent question. I actually get to decide. I'll best grow. I'm going to get to decide. So we'll talk about, I mean, hundred dollars and USDA commodities because that's, it's a great part of the business. Some important dates that I just wanted to point out, and I didn't want to go the whole history of school nutrition, but I thought these were key. 1962, funding changed from grant and aid to states to a guaranteed meal reimbursement. And I actually will address how we received the reimbursement and what it's based, how it's based. In 1966, school food service becomes a program under the USDA. And school breakfast program is piloted. So piloted, so breakfast didn't start even remotely until 1966 in the schools. But we are, again, we are governed by the USDA, which is also the FNS, um, part of USDA, which is Food Nutrition Services. In 1994, Healthy Meals for Healthy Americans Act requires school lunches to conform to the dietary guidelines for healthy Americans. That is what we adhere to in our meal planning, is are the dietary guidelines for Americans. So that came into place to standardize menus in the program. In 2004, the Child Nutrition and Weight Reauthorization Act of 2004 is enacted and requires us school food authorities to develop wellness plans. That was the original act that required us all schools to produce a wellness plan, specifying nutritional standards for all foods in schools and goals for physical fitness by the students. Now, that was a beginning. So it was just, give us your standards, put it in a wellness policy, present it, board approved, and then you've got something for parents and students to reference. But in 2010, with the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act, and this one's very, very important, it updated the nutrition standards and meal requirements for reimbursement and standardized wellness policies. When y'all talk about the meal pattern, in 2000, I started here almost eight years ago, and it was the six cents certification. Does anybody remember that? We had to go through a nutritional anal- Jackson does. We had to go through this, this amazing nutrition analysis spreadsheet for the USDA and fall into compliance with all these new nutrition standards to earn six cents more a plate. And the time it took and the stress it caused to adhere to these new standards was worth a little bit more than six cents. But that's where that came, and I started here when that came into play. And then the following year, I had an administrative review. So it was an exciting first two years here. But the, uh, this is also where they told us that at breakfast, the children have to have a fruit or a fruit juice, have to. And at lunch, they have to choose a fruit or vegetable. That's where this came into play, was the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act in 2010. So now, what we have-
What was the deal with at least some kids who go down and just pick, they would take a, a different meal type and then might get the pride, if they did that every day, so that they get a milk and a fruit, and what was, is that the reason for that?
Well, what it, what it was, is it goes back to this, to the Dietary Guidelines for Americans and setting new nutrition standards. The Institute of Medicine determined particular calories, sodium, fiber, all that. And so they kind of said, to get the number of calories, vitamin C, everything that they set as nutrition standards, it would require the children to take a fruit or a vegetable at lunch and a fruit or juice.
There are kids in our school system that would live on fruit and fries if they had a, period. That's all they get is fruit and fries.
Right. But it is a vegetable. So they can, they can do that. Stand up and do serve it. But I'm going to get into and explain the meal pattern at length in a moment because I really made a point to show you how difficult these standards are to meet. And I thought it was pretty-
How much waste do you have out of that, like fruits where you have to, the kids have to choose that? I mean, if majority of kids have, you know, how much waste do they throw out? How much do they throw away?
May I, may I defer your question until I get to the reimbursement? Because it's an excellent point and I want to like reference it. So I think it's important for you to see how we do what we do and then talk about the waste factor. So we'll get to that. It's an excellent question. In 2016, we had the final rule for a revised wellness policy as a result of the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act. So in 2016, we had to do a whole new wellness policy, basically just incorporating more monitoring of the wellness policy, more nutrition standards, talking about promotions with Farm to School, George Groen, that type of thing needed to be incorporated in the wellness policy. So on that note, y'all are so lucky today. I have a handout of the newly revised wellness policy. And there's nothing in here shocking. There's nothing in here that says have to, better, you know, if you don't, you, you don't get to eat. It is just basically saying, look, we're going to try to create as much of a healthy environment for the children. So this is not much different than the one that y'all already had in place. It's just I had to update it to the 2016 requirements. If you'd like to take a moment to, to look at it.
Anything specific you want us to read in the past?
Really, it's just basically the same as the last one. And it's, I mean, not, nothing in here is going to be something that needs to be formally pointed out because it's just the saying, hey, we're going to give, you know, partner with physical activity, meat nutrition standards, smart snacks. If y'all heard that, those two keywords, smart snacks. It really affects the nutrition department more than any other department with the smart snacks. But it's just promoting a healthy environment. But this is how we're going to do it. These are different bullet pointed ways we're going to do it. And so, just as a note, I have an administrative review this year where the state comes in and this is air follicle to toenail, that they come in and oversee and audit us. So having the updated wellness policy is key, that I need to have that done before the state comes in. So I tried to make it pretty easy and meet all the standards. Now, is this something that can be, do I need to wait for this afternoon for the board meeting or?
We're in session. You were saying that you would present this as recommended to be approved?
Yes, sir. Please.
Okay. If, if the board feels comfortable doing it, or if they want a little more time to look at it, we can come back and see.
We have a regular board meeting.
Okay.
Absolutely. And what we do, just so you know, these are no different. The one that I'm presenting today is no different than any other district in the state of Georgia because once again, we share information. Why reinvent the wheel? If something is solid, then we share and we implement ourselves.
It works about things like drink machines and things we could sell and like, and how that's different than fundraisers. This is pretty in-depth about those things. You might want to look at that.
But what that is, and I mean, thank you, thank you. I'll address that, I promise.
They're different.
But the smart snacks, again, affects my department. Okay? So even though the other schools, the principals, I tell them, you know, we need, anything that you sell on campus needs to meet smart snacks, they're fundraisers. They have about 90 days worth of exemptions that they can sell whatever they want to. Um, so it really, again, only affects anything that I sell during the school day. So that addresses, you know, so they can, as long as-
Cheese cakes.
Right, right. Ham pies, that kind of thing. So, but basically, what that's going to address is anything that is sold on campus cannot be sold during our meal service. That is standard. That has been since the original wellness policy, I think in 2006 was probably the first one. So, again, you cannot compete, they call it competitive foods. So things that compete with the National School Lunch Program cannot be sold during the breakfast hours or the lunch hours. And then as we, with the wellness policy, I'm, I'm delivering information. So as the wellness policy says, anything sold on campus outside of our serving hours has to meet smart snacks. But again, I want to remind that principals do have 90 days of exemptions that they can do a fundraiser. Can't be straight 90 days, but it's cumulative 90 days that they can run a fundraiser. So it's really never going to affect anything that they do. We like to work with them, not against them. So, but I have to, you know, at least look after my interest in regards to the wellness policy. So any other questions with that? Okay. Here is the fun part. We are going to talk about reimbursable meals because as I mentioned before, the USDA provides us reimbursements. And it's all going to come together based on what we're going to talk about here. Defining a reimbursable meal. In order to receive federal reimbursements, students must be provided a reimbursable meal, which is mandated by the USDA based on the Dietary Guidelines for Americans. And every school participating in the National School Lunch or Breakfast Program must offer certain components to students every day. So I have defined components that I have to offer. As long as the school participates in offer versus serve, which I will define, students do not have to take every component offered. So to qualify as a reimbursable meal. So when we're in the cafeteria and you have the cashiers and the children are coming by with their trays, those cashiers are probably one of the most important employee for me at that moment to identify a reimbursable meal. Because if I claim a non-reimbursable meal, I can get money taken back. So these meals, when we talk about reimbursable meals, are what gives me an opportunity to claim and receive reimbursement. So it's very, very important that my folks understand what this means and what a reimbursable meal looks like. And it's going to get found when I show you. So to qualify as a reimbursable meal for breakfast, the three components are milk, fruit, fruit juice, and grains. See if I see something missing that we might think that's important at breakfast?
Me?
For young ones, growing brains, forming brains. Okay, so with meat, I can offer meat because y'all see I put sausage biscuits and chicken biscuits, but the meat doesn't count towards the reimbursable meal. I'm just doing something to promote breakfast at that point. Because it's only these three components that have to be on the tray. So when teachers get upset during, look what I did.
I like it. And I like that.
Squeeze it. Okay. Um, so when teachers complain, why are there so many cars at breakfast? I promise you, I'm not doing that. Okay? It is because I'm trying to incorporate yogurt. I put yogurt and grain crackers, you know, to get the kids some protein. I try to do sausage with grits, a sausage biscuit, chicken biscuit, things like that to incorporate some protein. But again, it doesn't count. So when we talk about money, that's me spending more breakfast than I need to. But again-
It's how you get your money back.
It's participation, which we'll talk about. So three components. And at breakfast, a fruit or fruit juice or both must be taken. At lunch, there are the all five components. Milk, meat or meat alternate. So your soy, your cheese, your yogurts, things like that. Vegetable, fruit, and grains. A fruit or vegetable or both. I always say that because I don't want kids that think they have to only choose one when you're talking about ways. If you want both and you're going to eat both, then I want you to have both. So that's why I always say that when the menu's open, a fruit or juice, a vegetable, or both must be taken.
See, if I go through the line, all I'm going to do is get meat. I don't want to eat, we're talking vegetables.
I know. I know. And I will tell you what happens when it happens. Okay, offer versus serve. We've said this for years. What is offer versus serve? Well, the goal of offer versus serve is to reduce waste, to offer a variety and allow students to choose the foods that they want to eat. So in our world, we say that they are allowed to decline specific items, specific food items. And not that, oh, you don't have to choose that. No, you decline that component. I don't know why, but that's what they say. That's what they say. So, but offer versus serve is actually meant to reduce food waste. Because if we did a serve situation, I, I don't mean to be elementary about it, but a serve situation is the way things used to be. Pizza, corn, salad, milk. That's what you get. I'm going to serve it to everyone. Everybody gets that. So that's what we try to get away with because that could pose a problem of waste because you're putting all this food that the kids might not want on the tray and say, here, take the tray. With offer versus serve, I offer a variety in the hopes that they're going to choose what they actually want to eat outside of having to take a fruit, a fruit juice at breakfast and a fruit or vegetable at lunch.
Do they have to choose each component, though?
They do not. And we're going to have some fun with that. So I wish, this is how complicated. I wanted to do it this way because it's not just putting the food on the tray. I mean, my folks have to understand how this works. It is a puzzle. It's a puzzle.
Lisa, let me just show y'all, this is great. But big picture, we follow the rules from the USDA and from the Fed so that we can get the money. Now, if, we wouldn't have to follow any rules if we provided our own food, but we would have to pay for it. And so if you had to pay for it, I just will tell you, it probably costs a couple of meals to be able to provide the food that our kids would like to eat. And, you know, we'd have to incorporate like a Chick-fil-A or a place, and it would cost a lot of money. So as we talk about this, know that we're, we're getting reimbursed and that's why we follow the rules that we follow. It's not that we, you know, choose to do that.
But we also follow those rules because there are, are some nutrition things built into them that kids need and they're not getting home.
But I wanted y'all to know, I mean, you, you know, if you didn't do that, you'd have to do everything on your own. The cost would fall back on the school district instead of the federal paid for, property tax owners to pay for it.
And like Dr. Dawson pointed out, the USDA commodities, if you decided to do food service on your own. Now, a half a cup of fruit or vegetables or at least two other food items. Now, what was I mentioning before? Components, right? That breakfast has three components. Well, in that reimbursable meal for breakfast, it's about the items, not the components, but the items that make a reimbursable tray. So at breakfast, I have two entrees. If you look at the menus, you will see two entrees. So that is usually typically a grain. And if it counts as two grains, then that's two food items. So a biscuit is two food items. Are you with me? Okay. So at that point, all they have to have is a half a cup of fruit or juice. It looks weird because it's just one biscuit, but it counts as two grains according to the USDA meal pattern. So all they have to do is get the juice or fruit at breakfast. So I offer two entrees. I offer two fruits. Sometimes one is canned. Usually I try to do fresh every day. And then a variety of fruit juices. Because of course, we want the kids to come in and want to take everything they can, and I want to stress this, take everything on that line. The one entree, the two fruits, whether it's canned or fresh, and then a fruit juice and a milk. I can have all of that. And that is a reimbursable meal that I'm happy to serve. And at milk, the milk component, we have to offer, again, offer a variety of flavors and variety of fat ranges. Skim 1%. We cannot do all. So we just got the flavor to go back up to 1%. It was skim. So now the kids can get the 1% flavor. So we're real excited about that.
We get a whole milk.
Well, this, it goes against protein and breakfast. Whole milk's important for brain development. I-
I like that. It's all milk.
Right. In admiration, everything.
Grocery store now, they got, they got 1% sold and 2%.
Well, that's like having a glass of water and skimming some milk.
Two gallons of whole milk.
How is that healthy?
They define it by the nutrients that are, that are in it. The vitamin D, of course, is key. Okay, so at breakfast, we're talking about, there has to be at least three food items on the tray. So can they have an apple, a grape juice, and a milk? Is that a reimbursable breakfast?
That I have a grain?
That is a reimbursable breakfast. Because it's three food items. See, that's going to be fun at lunch. But see, see, it's tricky. I mean, when the people, when the cashier sees it, they're, they're confused.
They have to be pretty smart to know if they qualify.
Exactly. When it's something outside of the entree being served, then all of a sudden it's, oh, this is weird looking. This is weird. So they could have, you know, a-
You have to call somebody here to make a judgment. Lisa, what was this here?
Well, the managers better be well versed in what it is. Cause that, and that's exactly what they need to do. They have a question about a tray, they need to ask the manager, not let it go past the question.
And what happens if someone comes to the cashier with a non-reimbursable breakfast lunch?
We have the pleasure of asking them to please go back and pick another food item. They cannot pass the point of sale with a non-reimbursable.
So you make them get that.
We, we, we encourage highly to go back and find something.
So in that case, you got, you may have to waste an item to get reimbursed, basically. You could. It could look good though.
Feasibly.
But you're not allowed to let a non-reimbursable meal pass them for a sale.
If a non-reimbursable meal goes by, I cannot claim that meal. I would have to view it as paying for an entree and a side item.
But that means you have to keep up with them. We'll tally how many were non-reimbursable. So it's much better to get to go back and pick up another item.
It, it is better for the child and it is, it is better for the reimbursement.
Well, if they don't eat it, you get reimbursed for it. That's the main thing that you're having.
So even if they pay for their lunch, you get reimbursed.
Absolutely, at a lower rate. And I'm going to show, I'm going to show y'all this one because you're using USDA. And so I will address the reimbursement.
It's just a portion, right? It's just a different amount that they-
Oh, very, very little. Very, very little.
If you put pineapple on pizza, that'd be too-
That'd be too much.
We did.
That's pretty good.
Wait, wait, on the breakfast pizza, we could put the pineapple. But again, a breakfast pizza, the cheese does not count towards reimbursable meal, only the crust does. So breakfast is not as complicated as lunch. It's, it's pretty straightforward. There has to be a fruit or juice on that tray. And that's how I train my folks so they don't get nervous.
Good job. Good explanation on that.
Well, thank you. The state does a great job. That's their, again, I'm not a required poster I have to put up. But this tells of the components where they need to, to focus. But we have to remind them to take a fruit or a vegetable. It's been about seven years now. I thought they might remember that, but you still have to tell them.
What, what do you get, what's the cost if you get reimbursed for a plate like that?
I'm going to show you.
Okay.
Well, is, is this- It's an hour-long presentation if I don't cover everything.
Is this how Pitt County gives everybody free lunch? Nobody else has-
That's a different story. That's community eligibility provision or CEP. And I, at the end, if you'd like to remind me that question, because it's kind of complex, I'll be happy to address how that works. Because it's not as easy as it sounds. Because I have tried. Now, reimbursable meal for lunch, we are back to talking about components at lunch. It was food items at breakfast. Now we're talking about components at lunch. So they need to choose these. Now imagine, my staff has got to understand how this works because it's key to my reimbursement. So when we talk about components, we talk about the milk, meat, grains, fruits, and vegetables. They have to choose three components. Not three food items like breakfast, three components at lunch. Meaning, if they get two broccoli, if they get broccoli and carrots, that's still one component, right? One vegetable component. If that were the case at breakfast, those two broccoli and carrots would be two food items. Okay? So we clear. On this tray, again, I train my folks, please look for a fruit or vegetable first, then look at the rest of the tray. So that is, that is how the lunch offer versus serve.
So I could get a meat, a biscuit, and a milk. Would the grain be the, that's three items?
You were missing a fruit or a vegetable.
I gotta have-
You've got to have a fruit or a vegetable?
Yes, sir.
But I gotta have all five.
You do not have three, but three. But one of those three has to be a fruit or vegetable.
Got you. Got you.
Okay. But again, understanding where they have to change their frame of mind from breakfast of looking at food items because, oh my gosh, you can have a two-sat of fruit at breakfast and that's okay, but you can't here because that's one component, fruit. So everybody, does everybody get this? Cause we're going to quit. Okay. Go, be ready. Okay, planning a school menu. So here's, here's our November menu for the elementary school. Thought it was a lot of fun, interactive. Try to put as much information as I can because one thing that I do like to is talk about physical activity as well as nutrition because it is a balance. And drinking water, so it's a trifecta. But it's not easy planning this menu. And I'm going to explain why.
Squeeze it out.
Oh, push it out. Okay.
Do you have feathers in there?
Okay, turkey. Uh, that's a fun turkey feather right there. That's a fun party and turkey. So, why do I do what I do? Because it starts from popularity. What the children ask for, what they actually will eat. But then it's got to go to what will the USDA allow me to do based on these popular items. So here we go.
Squeeze in. Now, now progress. Now go forward.
Sorry, y'all. Smart boards are not meant for. Okay. So here's the breakfast pattern. Easy? In order to plan, menu planning responsibilities, that look pretty simple. Okay, so base for breakfast, fruit, I have to offer a cup of fruit in grades K through five. Oh yes, it changes with age groups. So I have to meet, well bless you, one cup of fruit every day because this is the amount for the week and this is the amount for the day that I have to offer. Now, a cup of fruit- Now, a cup of fruit, I offer fresh or canned and juice. So that's my cup of fruit that I offer every day. Bless. Same goes six through eight and then nine through 12 for this component, it happens to be the same. So a cup every day, so it totals five cups a week. Somebody sat in a room, the Institute of Medicine, for a very long time to figure this, these nice charts. Now grains, all of them have to have one ounce of grain offered every day. But I can do two ounces because there used to be a cap on the number of grains that I could offer, but now they relaxed that, so I can offer things that, or I can offer two ounces every day of grains. Uh, just to give you a reference, a piece of toast is a one ounce grain, a biscuit is a two ounce grain. So the, okay, that's not as difficult to me because it crosses all grade levels, the one ounce portion at breakfast. Uh, no meat because why? Because meat does not count towards a reimbursable meal at breakfast. Milk, it's gonna be eight ounces every day. I have to offer eight ounces of milk in a variety every day. Down here, I cannot tell you how many times this has changed and that we've had to adapt to the changes. Uh, the sodium level is back down to target one because we absolutely had a revolt in school nutrition where children would not eat because you cannot reach what they were asking unless you're serving cardboard. So, uh, so they did relax those, they've relaxed the grain requirement. Uh, we are now back to fifty percent of everything that I offer is whole grain. So not everything has to be whole grain. So no whole grain biscuits. Y'all try doing that in a new job, coming to a new school and tell these kids they cannot have regular biscuits and find a perfect whole grain biscuit. I found one that's corn and honey and, you know? Nope. Okay, so here's the lunch pattern, again, really fun. This is what I have to adhere to when I plan a menu. So now we're adding the components. Oh, but wait, but wait. In the vegetable component, I have to meet every week these requirements. So I have to make sure that all these different vegetables are represented in a week's menu at certain levels, measurements. Okay, so fine in each of these, something that children will eat consistently.
Not green broccoli.
We know corn.
But not green, what kids eat?
Uh, the only, romaine, lettuce, and broccoli. Sometimes we throw a little spinach. But, but that red, orange, you're talking about carrots predominantly, uh, sweet potatoes for the tomatoes, you know, we're able to, able to reach it. But when you're talking about lettuce, lettuce counts as half credit when I put it on the menu. So a cup of lettuce doesn't count towards reimbursable meal component as a whole cup, counts as half a cup. So if I do a half a cup of salad, it's technically a quarter cup of leafy dark green. If I use romaine, y'all get this?
A cup and a half, that's as clear as hood.
So three cups, that's Lamar.
Yeah.
I do try to give them as much.
Here's three cups to eat it, kid.
So you put a lot of, a lot in the menu, has a lot of thought.
I lot of thought, I promise you, I do not just throw things at it. Now, here's, here's the fun thing. So what is the requirement for fruit? It's a half a cup, half a cup portions is a full component of fruit at lunch. Vegetables, oh wait a minute, now we gotta throw in three quarter cups, okay? Three quarter cups is the full component for vegetables. But they can take a half a cup of fruit or vegetable at lunch, right? That is the requirement, they have to have a half a cup of fruit or vegetable. But wait a minute, what is the three quarter cup to mean? The three quarter cup says, what if that's one of the main three components the child chooses? Mind you, my cashiers are having to think this through. So if they don't have the meat and they don't have a grain and this is one of their main components, then it better be a three quarter cup serving because if it's at a half a cup, I'm underserving, that's not a reimbursable meal.
And they know that, they'll send them back to get that particular portion or whatever?
We never tell them, go get something, something else, something else. Uh, we tend not to tell them exactly what to get because you want it to be their choice, but we kind of guide them in a direction.
Here's a couple options.
So exactly, and then we try to have a couple.
Russell sprouts, got them wrong.
I'm gonna try, I'm gonna try some of them.
I bet some trash can wrapped beside the cashier too.
Yeah, we hope not, but we do provide fruit at the register to keep the lines moving. Did you have a question? Okay, uh, to keep the lines moving, um, so it's like, you are welcome to have this fruit or go back. So we try not to disrupt the lines. Um, grains, now here, okay, I wish I had the other chart. So one ounce, uh, K through five, one ounce six through eight is the minimum per day to offer. High school gets two ounces because of course they're older children. Now, you would think that's simple, right? Well, according to the USDA sixth sense certification tool, you can serve one ounce a day of grain, but then I'm not gonna meet the eight to 10 ounces required for the week, right? So some of the entrees during the week that I offer need to be in the two ounce. So guess what I do? I go on the high end, everything's two ounces at lunch because it's just easier, just easier, I'm in compliance, it's reimbursable every time if they choose a grain, it's gonna be a two ounce grain.
So that's a biscuit.
That's a biscuit, that's the roll, the whole grain roll that I serve, the cheese sticks. Uh, pretty much everything, the spaghetti is probably gonna be two ounces.
You have to serve two pieces of light bread to make that.
Absolutely, and then when you get the cheese, it's four slices to me. Uh, six ounce serving. Um, so basically, I have to make sure that I have everything calculated for the week that meets, falls in between the guidelines, um, whether, you know, high school, again, I can go two to three ounces of grains, so a Texas toast, if I wanna do something like a barbecue sandwich with a Texas toast, they are allowed to get more, um, grains in that regard. Meat, minimum is one ounce, that's a sausage patty. It's this lunch we're talking about, right? So the size of sausage patty is all I technically have to offer, but I don't. I do a full burger patty at two ounces. And again, the high school, I keep them at, uh, they have to be at two ounces, but some things, chicken tenders might be three ounces of meat. But that component, I have to adhere to, I don't have the flexibility like I do with grains anymore. I have to meet and fall within the range of the amount of meat, meat alternates that I offer in each grade level.
Minimum and maximum.
Minimum and maximum, gotta stay within that range. I always try to get the max because that's better for the children. I don't know why there's a minimum, but there is, but I do try to give the children as much as I can. Cost wise, also it has to be a factor.
What are meat alternates?
Uh, oh, it's like tofu or nuts, yogurt, anything that has protein, anything that's outside of a regular meat.
What are those hamburger things made of? Which, those hamburger, I would say patties, but they're not.
That I purchase?
Yeah.
It's beef, it's all beef, but I will tell you.
Why do they look white?
I have, I've not seen some that's all white. I will, I will look at it, I will look at it, but it's.
I was gonna eat lunch with Tootie one day and I saw that hamburger and I was like, that's okay.
Okay, well, I'll check it out because that's one of our popular meals.
I don't know if that's fat, the little white spots in there.
There's a, there is soy in the majority of my products. So not that I make them, I don't manufacture them, I just buy the best that the kids.
Well, just soy?
Is it a meat alternate?
Because it's the most alternate thing there is, soy is, which means it's really, really bad for you.
This is such small levels that they put in because, I mean, the predominant ingredient is meat. But I mean, if you, if you ever wanna know anything about the nutrition of our meals, I do keep all that information and I would be happy to look into anything that, that you might have concern over and share that information with you. I'd be delighted to because we have to, we have to do that.
Should be mostly cancer ones, which you want.
Well, I hope, I hope we'll change your mind, Thanksgiving meal's gonna be awesome.
Yes, sir, definitely.
Uh, I do not serve tofu.
I appreciate that.
What do we serve, don't we?
But what if the kids liked it?
Peanuts and.
Peanuts, cheese, yogurt, that type of things that need to be documented. I'll do a yogurt fruit plate and.
Cheese sticks.
And cheese sticks, cheese sticks. Uh, but now there's two kinds, we call the little pastry stuff with cheese, cheese sticks, but also we have the string cheese, string cheese that we offer. So if y'all feel confident about everything that I shared with you, we're gonna do the ultimate food challenge. Can you identify a reimbursable meal? So here we go. Is it reimbursable? This is lunch, all of these will be lunch, thank you. I didn't put lunch, breakfast is a whole meal. Five components? Those are both eight, eight cups, can y'all see that? I'm sorry, that's a minute, those are both eight.
I don't think it's reimbursable.
Okay, if you think it is a reimbursable meal, please raise your hand. No, 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 this is just what we go through, so it's just fun to kind of see what people think. So if it's non-reimbursable, please raise your hand. All right, you are correct. Will somebody volunteer why it is not reimbursable?
Because it doesn't have enough vegetables in it.
It's me?
Color.
That is correct, it is. Now, they have two at an eighth cup, right? But that's only a quarter cup, so that, I mean, they can have two different vegetables, but that's a quarter cup. And notice I said two different vegetables, the same vegetable becomes an extra. So an eighth and an eighth is a quarter, that has to be, there is no other fruit or vegetable, so that, no, that's not a full.
Judy, Judy, I'll see her next morning.
She needs to come.
I will need some help.
I know, okay, oh my god.
Squeeze it first, then move it. The actual order counts as one because.
It's not a half a cup.
Well, it's not a half cup, okay, if it was, because you can't have two, you have to have five things, right?
No, you have to have three. Three is the magic number. Three is the magic, three components at lunch, three food items at breakfast, so component, three.
And it's gotta be a fruit or vegetable, one of them.
One of them has to be a fruit or vegetable. And then it gets tricky. So when I serve two entrees, typically it's, each has a grain associated with it. Two different types of vegetables, two different types of fruit at lunch. They could have technically, if I offered it this way, a quarter cup of this one, quarter cup of that one, it's a reimbursable meal. I encourage that, it's what we do for pre-K because we want to expose them to different fruits and vegetables.
How do you question like, it's pretty complicated when you try to serve like soups or like a chicken pot pie because that gets very.
Everything in there.
But then you don't know how much of it you got in there, I mean.
Exactly, you know how I solved that? I used a USDA recipe for that, that comes.
So they tell you what, okay.
And they tell you.
So you can a lot of vegetables in one shot sometimes with a particular.
Spaghetti, like spaghetti sauce and everything like that because we get it from a company called JTM. Uh, they have everything measured precisely and they provide recipe support. So that's kind of, I always try to play it safe to make sure that we have all the components. Okay, how about this one's fine?
No, that's not it.
Grain? No grain?
No.
Is this, this for a lunch?
This is, all of it will be for lunch because that's probably the most complicated.
I don't think they know what grain is, is there crackers in that thing?
I do not see crackers, it's got. There are no crackers.
The croutons in there. Y'all got some croutons in there.
Okay, three of five components at full servings have to be represented on that tray, fruit or vegetable being one. So we are in agreement, this is a non-reimbursable meal? It is because it is, it is two components. What is represented on there? Vegetables, lots and lots of vegetables and fruit, that's it.
Chipotle.
That is not a reimbursable meal, excellent. Okay, here's another one. Is, is that reimbursable?
What's that cup of, what's that?
It's a fourth of a cup.
So that's what you, you have to have.
Half an inch.
Half an inch.
Half.
Y'all will not, you are welcome to work in the kitchen, but I would not put the point, put you on the point of sale.
Is a meat alternate, is the meat alternate, depends on what the meat alternate is, though?
Uh, black beans, I think it's a black bean chili.
I'm gonna stop stealing the crackers.
So does the beans cover the rest of the vegetable?
Red, yeah, would the red beans cover the red R? Give me about.
None of the fitch?
That can't be vegetarian chili if you got two ounces of meat.
Meat alternate. They're claiming as the meat meat alternate, so we, again, let's throw that into the mix. We have to identify how we're crediting, crediting different things, so, so we can credit it in two ways, as a legitimate or as a chili. So it is not part of the vegetable, it's the meat meat alternate, that's how they're counting it and then you've got a quarter cup, so it is not a reimbursable meal. We have three components, but we do not have a reimbursable meal because it's only counting as a quarter cup of vegetable, okay? Y'all gain.
You got amounts and components for.
Exactly, exactly.
That's why you got double wear.
Okay, all right, so is this one reimbursable? Can y'all see that okay?
No, no. No, that's not it, the vegetables has to have it.
And do y'all keep zoning in on that? Okay, this is why, when I got here, vegetables were offered in quarter cup sizes. In order to guarantee that if there's a fruit or vegetable, I put them in the I X or it's the serving utensil to make sure that it is a half a cup.
Cause that screws you up.
And the high schools are very famous for putting, we asked them to please go back and get a fruit or vegetable, they come out with two carrots. And at that point, if the state were here, that would be a non-reimbursable meal. They have to get a half a cup of the carrots. So it's painstaking for my cashiers that have to constantly talk to the children, encouraging them to please go back. Uh, we hope they get it after, after seven years, but, um.
They don't have.
They start in elementary and go to high schools and I tell them, I stayed in the high school, it's the same rules as they were last year. Okay, now, here's some interesting figures that we were presented at our state conference recently. The average number of lunches served daily are one million seventy-six thousand meals daily. Total number of Georgia school, that's in Georgia, total number of Georgia schools participating in the national school lunch program, almost twenty-three hundred. Total number of school nutrition employees, almost fifteen thousand. Total number of students receiving free and reduced meals, almost a million, almost a million. Uh, we have a really strong push on George Graham, Farm School of George Graham. So when we talk about purchasing items, USDA items that I receive, but also anything that I purchase, in my specifications on the food vid, I am requesting that it be a George Graham item. So these numbers are amazing and this has been going on for probably about three years. So we are supporting our local farmers first and foremost, so those are some really nice numbers. Uh, we've spent over twenty-six million in George Graham products as a school nutritional program. We have, uh, served a hundred and eight million in the year, a hundred and eight million breakfast, almost two hundred million lunches in a year and snacks, about ten million. Uh, these are the different programs that are administered under the USDA, the national school lunch, breakfast, after-school snack, seamless summer option, farm-to-school, fresh fruit and vegetable program. Uh, there is light, that, that could be potentially something that I could get this year for an elementary school. Uh, they give us money and we provide any fruit that we, any fruit that we want or vegetable that we want. It can be, it can be crazy, it could be star fruit and that's money that they give us. And now the children don't get a whole star fruit, they, it's something that we portion out and let them sample, part of the education about making good choices and experimenting with different types of fruits and vegetables. Uh, food distribution, which is USDA and special milk program. So we don't do that, we don't do that. Uh, this just breaks down kind of where the money goes that we have. Direct costs are about nine and a half percent and the indirect cost about 1.3 percent. Food and labor, if you notice, they're almost the same. What it used to be was food was always the higher number, it would be like sixty-fourty, that's kind of where you want it to be. You wanna spend more money on your food than your labor for the children. But now, uh, benefit wise, this is what's happened, so our labor costs almost exactly the same amount as our food. Uh, any questions on that? I thought they showed some pretty neat numbers.
How quickly are we reimbursed?
We get reimbursed very quickly, we apply once a month and the money comes in about a week later, so it's a constant.
If you're upset of in that, you already have departments served with the district and through the state.
Because it's just like our P B here on a monthly basis, so.
Right, and, and that goes with our point of sale and claiming those reimbursable meals because those numbers from the registers in the schools are what we use to claim the meals. So it has to be one hundred percent spot on. Okay, so where's our money come from? Reimbursements, reimbursement rates, and I'll talk about that in there. They are different for free meals, free benefits, reduced benefits, and paid students. We get a different reimbursement. We get a different reimbursement for a reimbursable meal per those different sections. Uh, paid meals, adults coming to eat with us, uh, we love that. Visitors, student visitors, anyone outside of our Monroe County schools. Uh, we do, anybody that pays out, that is how we get, um, revenue. Allo-cart sales, my allo-cart sales are very minimal, because why? Because my department has to meet smart snacks regulations, so that's very difficult. Uh, you will see in the high school that we have ice creams. Those are all smart snack compliant, but it's something that we can sell to the students outside of the reimbursable meal. And then contracts, we contract with head start and provide their breakfast, lunch, and snack.
Like if a kid wanted a, when you say like, if they wanted a double portion of chicken strips, as long as they got the, all the components on a regular meal, that's alright?
That extra, uh, chicken strip, it's gonna be an extra entree, right.
Yeah, but if you pay for it, you can eat part of it.
But I can't do it. Because why? Because it doesn't meet smart.
Kids will go hungry.
Listen, I, it's, it's, I understand, if y'all would like to join in.
Say go to the line twice.
I mean, well, we cannot serve duplicate meals, because our computer program, and we cannot claim two meals for one student. So, our computer system is...
What would be a lot of, what would be a lot of cart a kid could give?
Uh, gay rage, water, the ice cream, uh, Rice Krispie treat.
Something that's not on the line, pretty much, right?
So you can't go back and get extra from the line. Fruits and vegetables, yes, but not a meat.
What if they're, even if they're paying for it?
Even, uh, if they, I, because that falls under allo-cart sales, I can't sell anything that is not smart snack.
What about this regular, regular, uh, lunch menu, if you want to get double or four?
It's an extra entree cost.
So they can buy it?
They can buy two trays. They could, they could, they can, depending if they're, have applied for free, reduced, uh, meals, uh, they can get a second meal and that's gonna be full price.
But they have to pay that same meal, they don't get two free meals.
So, so you can't, if they can't buy more food if they want?
Absolutely, they can't, they can't. But here's the thing.
On two pieces of pizza?
I can't. It has to be smart snack, the onion. If you can serve it for, if you can serve it for lunch, why would it be a smart snack? Okay, because when it's, it's part of the reimbursable meal, it's part of the component, it meets, you know, in a week, it meets my nutrition analysis for the week. I can serve it, because I'm serving it specifically two, three tenders, depending on the, on the size and weight of it. But, like french fries, I cannot sell extra french fries. Because like, they're not smart snack compliant.
Because they don't want you to eat them.
It's not a snack, you serve it as an entree and then buy it.
But they do get it as an entree, but I can't allow them to buy it because that's who's selling it and it doesn't meet smart snacks.
What you do is you have a friend that brings their lunch and get them to go through the line for you.
We encourage that.
It's just bad, especially, it was bad, it's terrible, you have to go around it, do what you want.
But I can't sell those french fries as an allo-card individual item.
Those are sweet french fries.
Uh, I would have to look at nutrition, I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful. There's a different calculator for the smart snacks. But again, uh, this is outlined in red, reminding that school nutrition program is governed by the USDA Food Nutrition Services Department and is self-operating and not a part of the Board of Education, let's say. Okay? Okay, now here's our fun chart. This is our fun chart. Y'all asking about reimbursement, there you go. That's how we figure our reimbursement. Any questions on that? Okay, we got lunch, breakfast, and the Special Milk Program, which we don't. Okay. So, can anybody tell me what we fall into? I will tell you our free and reduces, uh, just did the report and turned it in today, it's 54%.
We're not Hawaii, Puerto Rico, or Alaska. Change of states.
Free is 341, reduced is 301. We're the less than 60% or the contiguous.
It's maximum rate of 325.
We're not Hawaii, Puerto Rico, or Alaska.
Right, so we're the contiguous state. Got that so far? Okay, so, we would think 54% overall is my claim, right? Oh, because, there you go, by school, because we have some that are 61%, 64%. So when Sandy, my right hand, uh, does the claim, we have to base it on the school's percentage, because we want to get the highest reimbursement.
How often do you do that? Once a year?
Uh, how often do the rates change? And I just see they, they give us seven cents, so I got a penny more for my, for my man's, that's a whole penny.
So we got two, we got two over 60?
We have two over 60%, but I get the, uh, because we're six cent certified, that we now get seven cents. So I get, I get, some schools fall under here, and then some, uh, schools fall under this one. So these two columns right here are free, reduced, and paid. And we are, uh, breakfast, we are non-severe need, so of course I will give these reimbursement rates for the contiguous states. Uh, you hear provision one, that's free rate.
Where is it, if the person buys their own at full price, how much do you get paid on it?
Uh, the pay for lunch is 39 cents, that's my reimbursement. But how much have I spent on that meal? What is my plate cost on that meal? So the balance between what I charge the student and this reimbursement, I better be above my plate cost. But that gets, I mean...
Well, you get 34 cents for a full free...
You're a nonprofit.
So you gotta make up $2, about 60, $3.60. What do we charge, 3.75 for a?
For a paid meal, a paid meal, but for the high schools, 2.75.
So that's something you make up the difference between what you're free, you get back for free, and that 39 cents, right?
Right, the 39 cents, correct. Correct. Everybody, so ideally, I have to keep my plate cost down, because you want it to be, with paid, the money that's over the 32 cents is what I'm earning for that meal, is a revenue for me with that meal, outside of the 32 cents, because I want it all to be profit. So when I price a meal, it has got to be more than the plate cost, and I'm gonna tell you today that it is not. Because if I charge exactly what the food costs quickly, like if I jump from where we are now to, to my plate cost, then, um, it would probably shock a lot of people.
So your labor cost is figured into those too, right?
Uh, for the reimbursable meal, it is figured into my plate cost. It is figured into my plate cost. This is just per child, as they qualify for free, reduced, or is paid. Every meal that goes through, that's all they're caring about. It's a reimbursable meal, bing, that's one, bing, that's two, that's where I get that money.
And all your hard costs, like your labor, your food, like your, I grabbed, you showed earlier, and all that's figured into that.
Into the plate cost, correct. There's food cost and plate cost, and the plate cost, which is incorporated in the plate cost, as long as paper goods, chemicals, that, anything that I do, one of my business. It's a fun chart, because it looks like, oh, we're just, we're 60%. No, no, some schools aren't. And we want to make sure that we don't just use...
And K D Sutton and Hubbard are both 60, so that, that, they're different.
Right, Hubbard's 64% and K D Sutton's 61%. Okay, we are a people business. Average daily participation is key. That is, you hear this all the time, what's your ADP, what's your ADP? What is your average daily participation? Why is that important? Because of my claims. The more kids that I have eat, the more I get to claim with the meal, so I need to increase participation.
So you don't like it when I send my kid with their, oh, lunch?
I'm gonna get a tray too.
You're gonna try to attract them.
Are you gonna trade too?
They could get it, they could get a tray. I hope they will. I mean, I hope that they find something that they'd like to try. We encourage, like, just come through, try, you know, if we do something, something with vegetables, or, you know, we don't, we don't push it. But we do, we do educate, that's my job.
Was that, you give them the option, like, some of my grandchildren are just good here, some of them take their lunch every day. But then one of them particularly saw something really good one day, she thought she wanted to try, and now probably four days a week, she eats lunch in school.
Mission accomplished.
But she takes her lunch, she feels free.
Mama's appreciative.
She liked me.
Well, and that's the thing, I mean, it is, we try to make it good to where they want to, but it does help the family, because, I mean, you know, having to get up in the morning, get groceries, have to keep all that on hand.
To space, to space.
So, we want to make it good, but again, it's not the meals of yesterday. I'm trying as much as I can, because the USDA requirements that I adhere to, it is different. But we try to find, that is why I conduct tests, because I want to find the things that the children will eat. And that is wonderful, and I appreciate them. Alright, so here are the average daily participation in percentages, okay? And just to let you know, 37% breakfast participation is the state average. 68% is the state average for lunch. So as you're looking at these numbers, keep that in mind.
So is that why we tried to do those different, uh, ideas with middle and high school, with the to-go and grab a biscuit?
Absolutely, absolutely. The breakfast part, because I'm trying to bring the food to where the children are, so at least they can be exposed to it, but hopefully want to try, uh, something that we have. So you want to get to, get to them, whether it's in...
That's weird, middle school, they're the lowest on breakfast, but they eat a lot of lunch.
Okay, you said the middle school?
Oh, lunch.
Uh, yes, they are phenomenal, they are phenomenal. Actually, 58% for a high school is very good, is very good. Uh, especially with our free or reduced, that is, we're doing a good job there. These numbers are now recovering from when they implemented the six cent certification. I took a huge decrease in that, in, uh, average participation, because of the grain, whole grain requirement, and making them take a fruit or vegetable. Does anybody try to make their kid eat lima beans? I might make them one time, and then they're never gonna eat another lima bean, so... So it's hard. So, this is beautiful to me, because I've seen it through. We, we, we hit rock bottom, but we are skyrocketing, uh, at this point, so I'm very, I mean...
So we can basically need schools that are our own little target each year, based on the years forward, just trying to be better than that. And breakfast and lunch, so...
And I look at it overall, and that's what you'll see, I'll share those, uh, numbers of, if they've ever hit their highest breakfast participation, number of kids served, I want to share that, because they're so excited. They've done their job. That's why we do promotions, like theme breakfast, we, right, have stuff hidden under chairs and...
Pretty much hit rock best, um, like, what, 2018?
It, I mean, it's been, yeah, a few years.
I think it's really good that you're sharing with us the participation by schools, but also what the state average is, because we don't, and I'm sure the general public has no idea how many the kids are eating, or what we're doing to try to encourage them to develop good nutrition habits. So I'm, I'm really glad you're sharing these numbers.
Thank you, I, I was happy.
You know, if you add those percentages together, and you can get to 100, you're pretty good.
Absolutely, that's, and that's where we're always looking to go.
Hubbard's 64, 42, and then even with T G Scott.
But I, and overall 2% increase in breakfast is thousands of dollars in reimbursement, I mean. So, if we get an extra 50 kids, it's a big deal, it's a big deal. So they know, and they are so energized and charged. I mean, our health scores, I wish I could reveal it today, but there's one more school remaining, so I can't preface it.
So one day, based on your reimbursement, is probably $5?
If breakfast and lunch?
And so you could do the math, five times five times that amount of money for the whole year is a lot of money.
Is a lot of money, is a lot. And I know I'm nonprofit, and, and that's, you know, that's running a very, uh, good department, but we want to make a profit only to get back into the program. So, uniforms, uh, the prizes for the kids, promotions, that type of thing. Uh, purchasing maybe a higher cost item that I can put on the menu.
Shrimp.
So, so, like, serpenter, you know, something like that. That, that always comes up on the survey when you ask the high school. And it has to, there's nothing else that could get that money. Am I... Okay, are we okay on time? Okay, okay, now, now that we talked about meals and reimbursements and all that fun thing, let's talk about and address the elephant in the room, meal charges. Probably hear the news, it's called lunch shaming. How many of you here honestly think that I instruct my folks to shame children for, uh, having unpaid meals, having debt? See if I think that I really want to do that? Okay, I do not, because you know what my people do? They pull money out of their pocket and they cover those kids' meals. I can promise you, it is nation, nationwide, this is nothing aimed just at Monroe County. This is a problem everywhere, okay? So, what do we do about it to try to prevent it? We know how it happens, because those children who are not eligible for free or reduced, uh, priced meals may come in and, oh my gosh, I forgot money. So, are we gonna say, sorry, better luck next time? No, we're gonna let them charge. Why, how do we let them charge? Because we have a charge policy. So, free and reduced eligibles may incur charges during the application of criminal process. This is something very important I wanted to share with y'all, because it's an issue every year. Parents, some, believe that if they fill out a free and reduced application one time, it carries them through the whole year. I can promise you that I advertise, Valerie, I believe you can, can validate that, advertise that a new application is due every year. Well, if parents wait till school starts and say, the second week of school, oh wow, I've got to do my free and reduced application, charges may have occurred during that time before the application is received and processed. So, explain, if, if they get approved for free, that is wonderful, but they still are responsible for the charges as the application's get, uh, getting processed. How long do we take? By law, we have 10 days, but I can promise you, it's within the hour. If we receive one in the office, Sandy Peppers is excellent, and she gets that processed. Also, we do the online, uh, application option. So, school nutrition programs must be financially self-sustaining, so that is why school meal debt impacts our ability to serve all children high-quality nutritious meals. Okay, we cannot carry negative debt from year to year. We cannot do that by USDA regulations. So what does the USDA require? It's not a one-size-fits-all charge policy. I wish it were, because it would really make my life a lot easier, if the USDA would just give us a template and say, this is what you have to do. But it's not. It's something that we decide collectively. What do we want to do? We've had the same charge policy since I got here, and even, uh, prior to that, for years. It's a good one, it's a good one, but it's very difficult to, to adhere to, and it doesn't really give us any legs to stand on when it comes to collecting unpaid debt. But we have one, so we have something that we can fall back on. We put it in the student handbook, it's online, it is available on my website. It is as advertised as I possibly can make it, but there still is confusion when it comes to people owing debt.
Just for information, we're aware, a lot of people are aware of that, and, um, the women's group at church I was in was talking about the, the fat cat buddies, the food for the weekends and all that. And someone came up with, but what about school meals? Supposedly they aren't at school meals. So, our women's group is donating a certain amount of money every quarter to one of our schools, we picked a school, just, just to address that particular thing. And the day I went in to give the money to Mr. Johnson, he said, oh, that's an answer, something we need. And it's exactly the situation that you're talking about. The parents had not filled out the free and reduced form, they were eligible, but the child had like 25 days that had to be paid for. So, community donations get the community more wage.
Huge, and schools can do fundraisers and everything, uh, to help with that. But, precisely, the debt will not, why? Because we don't take trails. So here's our, um, charge procedure. It's not necessarily policy, so it's not something that needs to be voted on, but we certainly can address at any point in time and, and given what the years. It's on, again, it's everywhere I can possibly advertise it. But I just wanted to kind of remind you, this is what has been in place. One creative thing a school system has done is payroll deduction, so, because a lot of our charges stem from teacher charges. And, uh, that gets a little difficult to, to collect at the end of the year. So, this way, a teacher who has children in the system, which is an idea, uh, that's been successful in another district, that, uh, they can sign up for payroll deduction, so they never have to bring money or, or do anything. And they can, um, school cafe allows them to go and look at transaction history, so they can see.
As long as they'll get like three meals a day.
Right, right, and they can put their kids on it. They can put their children on it. This is not, I'm, I'm sharing this information, I'm also sharing you the state board rules regarding the charge policy, because USDA sets their guidelines, state makes it even more strict, and that's what we have to adhere to, are the more strict rules. Okay, so what do we do to handle almost, this is, we're getting it late, so I can be faster, maybe. Uh, handling unpaid meal charges? We try to prevent them in the first place, is what we try to do, by communicating with families, email, telephone, notes sent home, uh, student reminders, if they're older, we don't typically communicate that much with the elementary children with regards to unpaid meal charges. meal charges. So that's here towards middle and high. Hey, you know, looks like you owe lunch money. We provide an online payment option, which is School Cafe, it's been very successful this year and there's more to come with that app, uh, and also website that alerts parents of a low negative balance in their child's account. So it helps parents manage and so they don't have to come home and get a letter. There's no easy way to say, hey, I'm sorry you owe money. Uh, it's very, very difficult. Puts my staff in a difficult situation because it makes the cafeteria be negative, a negative space, and we don't like that. Uh, school nutrition staff, they work very hard throughout the year to identify all families who may be able to utilize confidential benefits for school meals, the free and reduced applications. We send them home if there's some unpaid meal charges that might be getting a little higher, which is as a reminder, you have this option should you need it. Uh, so we do try to communicate as much as possible. Uh, we avoid serving alternate meals or what they call lunch shaming until absolutely necessary and only with principal approval. We are in this together, we are not out and hurt or start anything, so if that becomes an issue and the principal says, it's now time, that's when we do it. I don't make that decision myself, I would never do that to the principal. Our ultimate goal is to fuel students for learning with healthy, well-balanced meals. That is the only goal. Okay, so we're not just hairnets and gloves. Want to take a moment? I don't know, who's that guy?
Is that Jtori?
Who's that, who's that?
That's our zoo guy.
So these are some promotions, uh, thank you to everyone that participated in the school breakfast, uh, National School Breakfast Week, that was great, um, about my staff, you know, with, with Halloween, and we can do that, believe it or not, we can. USDA highly encourages us to promote breakfast and lunch. Okay, so real quickly, what this says, USDA guidelines and the Code of Federal Regs, if you really want a good read, uh, it's, uh, Code of Federal, C F R two-ten, you can read that whole thing, because my dad actually did it, he was curious.
He's probably getting a golden cologne.
So, uh, basically, we, this was part of the Healthy, Hunger Free Kids Act that we happen to now adhere to professional standards and, let's read this, read that. These are required for me with an L E A of thirty-three hundred or more, we're at forty-one hundred.
About two hundred.
Oh, yes, forty-two hundred students. So a school nutrition director is required, I have to have a master's degree or higher and a two-year certification in school nutrition. University of Georgia is the only system in the state that has an actual program for school nutrition directors that get certified. It's a two-year program, so technically I have a master's degree plus a two-year specialist degree. Uh, it, this is, we're more than just hairnets and gloves. These professional standards set us, not every state does this, I'm going to emphasize that. This is not, you will have manager supervisors in other states, but you will not have actual school nutrition directors. And then we have to, uh, need certain training hours every year, pretty much mine gets summed up at the directors conference that I attend, uh, to put on about the State Department, so I get, uh...
They're very aware of training.
Right.
They're doing that now.
So we have, again, this is yours, we have ours, uh, my employees get it at in-service and throughout the year. Uh, our theme this year, I do try to change it up, is fueling school pride with healthy meals. It's not just cheerleading, I promise, but it's about, uh, the awards, the recognitions that we've been receiving. That's having school pride, that's having Monroe County pride. So the minis are tailored to, uh, the colors of, um, Mary Persons, the Bulldogs, so everything, I really want to be cohesive with the schools, and so we're going to be fueling school pride with healthy meals. And there we have it. Any questions?
Can you open the, for those that are looking at this?
Yes.
Those should have been posted for y'all to be able to have.
I might post them up here for you. All in favor of the most, let me know by raising the hand. You're unanimous. Next consent items.
All right, the consent items that we have are, uh, we do have some fundraisers and those are, if you could pull that up and I'll kind of go through them real quick. We have four from Hubbard Elementary, uh, through PTA and then one's a STEM organization there, and then Mary Persons, both of the golf team, and the Achievement Center is doing, uh, something through their positive behavior interventions and supports. And we will be selling, um, Santa Shop, some mother-son date night, uh, cookie dough sales, donors choose, and we've got dinner and live auction for the golf team, and then the Achievement Center will be, uh, M C A C Night at Texas Roadhouse, and they'll get ten percent of those proceeds. And those would be the, uh, fundraisers.
Yeah, what's the November fourteenth thing?
Right there, that is, uh...
Yeah, it just didn't have a description, I'm excited.
It's the same one as below, I think, is that the...
Same one, January ninth.
Mask, masking on that, Dr. Hitman. Uh, I'm Jan Collins, I'm varsity golf coach at Mary Persons. Uh, I had to put a date in and that was our first proposal. We have since postponed that to the Jan, January ninth date. You said the same thing.
There's no one from the fourteen.
That, yes, ma'am, that is correct.
So now fourteenth is not anything. Okay. All right, and so then we also have for overnight field trips, we have, Mr. Waldron will be taking F O F eight in, uh, December thirteenth to Tifton to complete and compete in the state floor design and E N R contest and then, uh, March twentieth, he'll be going to University of Georgia for the state nursery, wildlife, livestock, and agriculture mechanics competition. So we would ask for those consent items to be approved.
I'm going to put fundraiser prayers and theater prayers.
Second.
Point your finger, never, you didn't second, who seconded, oh.
That's that second.
Slap. All in favor of the most, let me know by raising the hand. Freedom of education recognition.
All right. This is one of the most pleasant things that we do, and so I'm going to ask Mr. David Herndon, Chief David Herndon, if he could come up here and stand with me while I talk about him a little bit.
Tonight, it's our honor to recognize one of our most supportive and involved community partners and helpers, Forsyth Chief David Herndon and the staff of the Forsyth Fire Department. Forsyth Fire Department is always a first responder when emergent, when Monroe County schools have an activity, a need, or of course, when there's an emergency. Fire department personnel and vehicles are always on high visibility at our big events, including football games and graduation. They're on site to ensure that visitors to our campuses are safe and just moments away when someone needs medical attention, and that happens on occasion when we have as many folks as we have on campus. When parades roll through town, there's always a city fire truck, usually loaded down with a bunch of cheerleaders, uh, in the homecoming and Christmas parades. Whenever there's an accident or incident that might cause issues with school bus traffic, Chief Herndon always makes it a point to alert us so that we can make adjustments to bus routes as needed. This proactive approach helps the system stay ahead of issues which might otherwise complicate the safe and efficient transportation of our children. Chief Herndon is also a regular participant on the system's safety committee. Annual Promotion of Fire Safety Week, and I can tell you, when that rolls around, Chief Herndon makes sure we know what the dates are. He'll call us and say, it's these dates, we'll have signage out front, we'll be on our video sign. So that, he spearheads with his staff Fire Safety Week. They're also always ready to help with pre-K Community Helper Days, Career Days, and any other special events that happen in our classrooms. On another front, Chief Herndon has been a longtime member of the Mary Persons Football Support Team. I couldn't find out how many years, you might could tell us, but you've been on Friday night film duty for years and years, how long?
Seventeen, I think.
Okay. Operating cameras from the top of the press box or the end zone, no matter the temperature or the weather conditions. For all those reasons and more, we as a school system are most appreciative of the contributions and support provided by Chief Herndon and the Forsyth Fire Department. They truly are friends of education in Monroe County. So we want to congratulate. And we have this, this is the write-up that'll go with it, David.
Calls a electrical fire here. The window.
Come on in. Mayor, we are a little ahead, so you are here just in time to see David get the award. Congratulations, Mayor.
Obtained, obtained and has, has to be achieved and to fit.
Ms. Elder, just going to talk to us a little bit about the C C R P I, uh, that we've received for the two thousand and nineteen school year, so she'll give us a little background information on that.
Well, good evening. Hopefully you've all heard the great news through Monroe Messages or through media outlets about Georgia's College and Career Ready Performance Index. Basically, that is our statewide accountability system that we have here in Georgia. It's a tool for annually measuring how well the schools, um, the districts, and the state are helping students achieve their goals. It does provide a comprehensive roadmap to help educators, parents, and community members promote and improve college and career readiness for all of Georgia's public schools. So what does it measure? Well, I could take another meeting to go over, um, exactly how you figure out, um, our score, but it does have five main components, content mastery, progress, closing gaps, readiness, and for the high school, we look at the graduation rate. Um, the total C C R P I score is reported on a one-hundred-point scale, and each of those components is also scored one out of a hundred, which, and then, um, each of those components is also weighted for the final C C R P I scale, and this is for every school and district in Georgia. So taking a closer look at what these components measure, when you're looking at content mastery for each school and for each district, we're looking at how well our students performed on the Georgia Milestones Assessments. So are they understanding and they mastering the content standards that our state prescribes us to, um, ensure that our kids are mastering? For progress, we look at individual students and we look at how they are growing relative to their academically similar peers. So are they improving, um, at a, at a good rate from year to year? If you go, okay. Closing gaps, here's where we look at subgroup performance. So in particular, we look at students with disabilities, those that are economically disadvantaged or who are on free and reduced lunch, and then we also look at our English language learners. So we want to make sure that our schools are serving those students appropriately and that they are growing academically. And also readiness, with that indicator, we are looking at opportunities beyond the classroom, we'll look at fine arts, we look at world languages, if a school offers world languages, and physical education. When you, if you go back one slide, so as I mentioned earlier, each of those, each of those four areas for elementary and middle, they're weighted. So for content mastery, remember you receive a score out of a hundred for each of these areas for elementary and middle. So for content mastery, this sample school received eighty-three point two. Content mastery is worth thirty percent of the, of the overall C C R P I score. Progress is worth thirty-five percent, closing the gaps, fifteen percent, and readiness is twenty percent. So that's for all elementary and middle schools. When you're looking at your high schools, again, we have the content mastery portion, the progress and closing gaps. For readiness, it looks a little bit different than the elementary and middle schools. Here, we're looking at the number of students who are enrolled in A P or dual enrollment courses. We also look at pathway completers for C T A, E, fine arts, and world languages. We also look at the graduation rate, the percentage of students who are graduating in four years and those who are graduating in five years. And their calculation is very similar, but it's a little bit different than elementary and middle. For content mastery, it's thirty percent, progress is thirty, closing the gaps, ten percent, readiness fifteen, and then the graduation rate is fifteen percent. So how do we use the C C R P I scores? Well, we use it as an improvement and communication tool, so we, we look at it to gauge each school's progress. Um, we also want to make sure that we share those goals with our stakeholders to make sure that we are improving our opportunities for our students. And also, it helps us plan for and implement data-driven decisions to make sure that we are sustainable with achievement. So how did we do? This is the slide you're all waiting for. So, um, as you can tell, all of our scores in Monroe County are highlighted in green. The state average is down here. So in two thousand and nineteen, the overall state average for high schools was seventy-seven. Mary Persons, eighty-six point seven. It's their high schools, that's their report card grade. Last year's score in eighteen, uh, was at eighty-four point one, so you see the growth there. At our middle school, the, um, overall state average for middle school, seventy-two point one. Our middle school, eighty-four point six. We increased by five point one points from the previous year. For Hubbard Elementary School, state average for all elementaries would be seventy-seven point one. Hubbard, eighty-nine point six. T.G. Scott, eighty-nine, and K.B. Sutton, eighty-five point eight. By looking at those numbers for each of our five schools, what similarities do you see? They've all increased, and then what else?
Well above the state.
Well above the state, and aren't they pretty similar? They're pretty close. They all are above eighty-five, but our scores are relatively, you know, close, which lets us know that our professional learning is, um, you know, we do a lot of things systemically so that we're speaking the same language, no matter what grade level or school that we're in, and so we know that our arrows are pointing in the right direction when all of our schools are performing at the same level. We don't have one school that's topping out and one school that's bottoming. We're all staying at around the same score and we're moving up. For our district score, the, at the, um, average district score in Georgia is seventy-five point nine, and we set it at eighty-seven point seven, with a six-point-three percent increase from last year, point increase from last year. Um, one thing that, that we did want to point out, that when you're looking at grade bands for elementary schools, just so you'll know, just a piece of information, our elementary schools rank number seven in the state. When you're looking at all the elementary schools, um, by district, Monroe County elementary schools are number seven in the state. When you look at our middle school, it ranks twentieth in the state, and when you look at our high schools, uh, seventeenth in the state. Something to be very proud of. So our, um, Monroe County School District is ranked ninth out of one hundred and eighty-two public school systems in the state, so we're a top-ten school district, and we are very proud of that.
Ms. Elder, I'd just like to make, uh, if I were to look at that green line, and we like being number nine, but if you kind of slide to the right, something that probably I'm a little more proud of...
It will pull up.
It's, it might not do it. If you will look at the economically disadvantaged, which that means those are free and reduced lunch, students that we serve, and then in the far coldest, special need students, and of the top twelve, we really have the most barriers as it relates to students in need is, is with economically disadvantaged and special need students. So, uh, even when we have challenges, our teachers and our kids are making the grade, and that's something to be very proud of, and we are. It's not number one, but we've come a long way. Uh, actually, last year, this apples to apples, we were nineteenth last year, and then moved to number nine, which is a huge move. And we're up among, uh, school districts that are historically high achieving. So, uh, we're looking to improve that, uh, but you do want to recognize accomplishments when you get them, so thank you, Board, uh, for your leadership, thank you to the teachers and the kids who have to perform every day. That's one of the reasons we wanted you to see what's going on today, because that's where the rubber... where the rubber meets the road, and the kids are really learning and really engaged, and it looks real good for our community that our kids are performing at a very high level. It's good for our community. It sells us for people trying to look for businesses, trying to find homes. In general, it's just good for our community. So we're glad to be performing high, but we're always striving to do better, so.
So alongside our CCRPI score, each school and district also receives star ratings, and these are not calculated with our, with our score, okay? This is a separate way to look at our schools and school systems. We look at school climate, and here is where we want to make sure that the schools are on the right path to school improvement. So our students, our staff, our parents were asked to take surveys. They use that information. They look at discipline incidents, the number of suspensions that a school receives. They also look at safe and drug-free learning environments, and attendance of students and staff, and they, everything is a calculation. And every school in our school system received five-star climate rating, which is the highest rating that you can receive there. We also will receive a star rating with financial efficiency, where you look at the, it compares per student spending and the overall performance of our students, but that rating will not be released until January, okay?
I think it'll be the last year they do it, too, because they found it's not really fair. So.
So next steps, so right now, each principal is in the process of reviewing their CCRPI scores with their faculty, and they go ahead and note areas for growth, and then those areas that need improvement, they put action steps into their improvement plans so they can begin working on improvement areas. In January, we will host our mid-year evaluations with our principals, and we go ahead and start thinking about the predictions for 2020. So since we know the formula that the state uses, we can go ahead and plug in some numbers and kind of see where we're looking now with the performance of our students. Okay?
Any questions from the Board?
I've just got one. When this data was released, the governor and state school superintendent made comments about possible changes.
That's the outcome.
We haven't seen anything on paper yet.
Oh.
No, they've done a few things. One had to do with trying to cut down on the number of tests. We did get some information about AP testing and allowing the grade to stand and not having to take an AP course and then double up and take the milestones course. So we did find out that information, which affects this, but I'm sure we'll get some more. We were, we were, the only thing that I would say about the CCRPI scores, as well as we did, if you pull that back up, only four schools made a nine-year, four school systems made a nine-year above, and I would be hard pressed to, and y'all know, y'all been around, that doesn't seem quite right out of 182. So they're looking at adjusting that scale so that school systems and schools get the recognition they probably deserve more than the way the scale is set up now. It probably, it doesn't need to be on a 100-point scale because everybody rates it like an A through D or F, like we did in school, and it's not the same thing. So we may be looking at a 200-point scale or something that's not analogous to what we have in schools. So I know when I talked to, we actually met with the governor, and that's one thing that we pressed, was we need to get away from that 100-point scale. It's just not, it's not, no matter what we say or do, people look at it, and we get out that number that we had as 87, what is the first thing that comes to your mind? That's a B. That's a high B, that's a B-plus, right? And it's not built that way. So that's one of the things that I think that they're working on maybe changing.
And then when that happens, then it'll be a baseline year, so we start over. So it's like, we get to where we halfway understand the evaluation instrument, then changes are made.
We got eight, you know, it's kind of like, yeah. But I'm sure there'll be some, all you governors like to put their stamp on education, assuming Governor Kemp, no difference, so we'll see.
We'd like to thank you for an outstanding report. We'll move ahead now to organization mediatic.
Okay. First up is personnel actions, and we presented those to you earlier, and we would recommend your adoption of those personnel actions.
I believe we have put the actions on the board.
Motion by Dr. Dawson. All in favor, motion left. Let be known by raising your hand. You're now.
All right, Ms. Evans, if I could also, Ms. Sealy, during her presentation, presented the wellness policy, the wellness rule. Wanted to see if there were any questions that you had, if there was anything we need to look at. It was an administrative rule rather than a policy. Yeah, I called it policy, essentially. So it's a revision of something that's been adopted previously?
Motion by Dr. Dawson again. You'll have a second.
Second.
Second by, great. All in favor, the motion let be known by raising your hand.
You got a question?
What?
Discussion. Eric, is any of the language, is the language exactly the same as previous call?
I mean, there are a couple of things that have been updated. I could find out exactly what has changed.
There wasn't one thing that was highlighted in here. I think there was, I remember.
I asked about. It's been on the agenda. This wasn't really what I wanted. I wanted some options.
I have this other package, sorry. We don't have the other one to compare to either of ours.
Well, like, when we go to the conference in Atlanta, that guy that does.
Did you find what Mr. Dipp is complaining about?
It's not a complaint, it's just I want to see if there's any added language.
It said what?
If there was any language changes that we need to be aware of.
I mean, I will be glad to find out. I know it's updated to meet state regs, but, you know, I don't know that anything wholesale has changed other than maybe some points, but I'll be glad to find out what those are and bring those back to you.
You want to tailor it, or you want to?
What you want to do? I mean, it's this time.
Get with it.
We'll bring that back if it's anything we've got, take it back out if it's different.
Okay.
Go ahead and approve it. All in favor, raise your hand. You're now.
We will report back on that. Thank you.
All right. Personnel action. Do you see? We got that.
Financial would be next.
Financial report. What is the money man?
Right here. All right, you can see the numbers for October. Our local revenue starts to trickle in. We already, in November, we've already received half a million dollars, so we're hoping that our next check will be even larger than that so we can cover our payroll. But expenses are pretty much in line with, with our budget. Scroll down just a, if you compare the percentages from last year to this year, our revenue percentage against budget is up, and our expenditure, expenses to budget are down, so that makes, makes for a good situation. But that's our, our general fund. Scroll down, and it included our capital projects, which this past month, we received splash money of $460,000, which is the highest of this new splash cycle, and hope it continues.
Count from that penny.
That penny, all those pennies count. And if you scroll down a little bit further, started reporting our federal fines. All of our federal grants pretty much have been approved by the state and have been entered into our system, and they are starting to spend their money, so I just included that also for your information. Any questions?
Just information.
Good report.
We get that every month. We're going to exceed our amount, that was a 23, 20, 29 million.
We just hit the cap.
Yeah, we're going to hit the cap. Our nurses' report is, Nurse Grant sent this to me. There's nothing that you have to approve, you just want to keep this in front of you from time to time to see the amount of visits that we're seeing. Thank you, Valerie, for making that a little larger for us. But you can see, as a district, going down those rows, I always like to look at them and compare from districts, and typically, right now, we're getting into the flu season and cold season, and those numbers probably will come up a little bit. Just a note, I asked, we had our flu vaccinations about a month ago now, and every year, our school flu vaccinations are going down. I'm on the Board of Health, and we keep up with all that stuff, and I think most of the time, it's, kids are probably getting vaccinated, but a lot of them choose to go to their own physician now, or go to a pharmacy or something that the family normally does, especially with the younger children. And right now, we don't have like the flu mist that they do, like the nasal spray, it's all a shot, and so if mom or daddy's not there with a shot, a lot of times, they're a little apprehensive about doing it. But our numbers were down to about 800, and I think, if you told me, they're going to probably be around 650. Now, we have good participation with staff, not necessarily so much with students, so hopefully, they're getting them somewhere, and so that we can kind of cut down on the number of flus that we have. But it's just amazing to me, look at the total office encounters down there, and you know, you say, well, that's massive, but if we're able to serve a kid and maybe give them an aspirin that will fix or whatever it is that sales them, and we can get them back to class, that's the whole point. If they're really sick, then we can contact the parent. But typically, our nurses for most of our children, I would say 80%, are the primary medical people they see in their lives, so they're important, and they do important work for us, and we just like to highlight that. And anytime that you have any questions about these numbers or anything that our nurses do, we're very lucky. You have allowed us as a board to have a nurse at every school, which we don't get funding for that, so you have said let's have that, and we're very grateful to have a nurse at every building. So thank you, and these are the numbers, and we'll keep you updated each quarter.
It's just mind-boggling. We have five schools, and every month, they have like 5,000-some-odd visits. That's like 1,000 per school. I know more of them are at the elementary schools, the middle school, high school, but it's just mind-boggling.
Just the number of it. And as we visit, there'll be little bodies, there are always little bodies in there, and they, the nurse is such an integral component of the schools now. I mean, kids probably know the nurse as well as they know their teacher, and they do a really good job of being, and for the staff. I mean, they're there for the staff, too, but it's, they stay busy. I will tell you that. Anytime you go visit them, they are not sitting, they got kids in that, in that nurse office.
Which is fearful, Japan.
It is, it is. It's something that we're glad to be about. All right. Next item.
To ensure that students take home engagement and loyalty.
All right, we have, our Leadership Monroe Group is here tonight to talk about their project this year, and their project includes the school system, and they wanted to come to the Board and present what that will be and how they will help the school system. And I'm going to call on our Leadership Monroe Group to come up and present to us, and thank you guys for being here tonight. Class of 2007, right here.
I asked for the first one they ever had before they changed it to the.
When did you do that? Ninety, when did this start at? Ninety and ninety? I was in that one to call this.
So good evening. Thank you all so much for having us tonight. This is the best part of our project, where we get to gift. My name is Kate Lastinger. I'm the president of Leadership Monroe Class of 2019. I would ask that all the members of the class stand that are here tonight, just, these folks have dedicated a year of their life to be able, to be able to make some super-special donations tonight. We created a website to help Backpack Buddies streamline information that the community can access, the ability for people to volunteer, the ability for food to be donated, as well as the ability for money to be donated to the program to feed children. It costs less than $4 a weekend to feed each of these children. The program is growing quickly. Jonathan is going to walk you very quickly through the website and the functionality of that, and then we're going to take one more minute to talk about a little bit of some donation.
This website will work on the iPad, iPhone, and on the desktop computer, so across those different platforms, it'll look a little bit different, but this is great that we've got touchscreen here in demo. The main things we got is the mission to tell you about what the program is. Click on that, find out what the program's there for. There's a way to click on to help kids sign up as a volunteer. There's ways to donate both money and food items, and then the upcoming events page. So we have those four basic items to go through really quickly to get information, and when you click on those, the events are static events that just tells about where the donations can be dropped off, that'll be here at the main office, the backpack packing days at the school, and then the delivery day, and then there's another place on locations where you can look at all the different churches in the area that participate, and maybe your church is not on the list and wants to get on the list, and if you want to find out how to get involved. So that's, that's a really good feature of the website. When we talk about the donations, looking at donations, you can donate money, your time and volunteering, and then the items. So when you click on the items here, sorry, this is a list of items that Ms. Lynn's looking for, for the, for the items for the website. So you can look on there at the website, see these items, and take them to the different drop-off locations. So that's a great place there, and also, the same information's at the top, is at the bottom, and then when you scroll through the website, you can find other information that's related to that. So on the contact form, if maybe you want to just send a note to the program, you can send that note there on the website, that's going to go to Ms. Lynn, and then the contact information is at the bottom of the website and at the top, and then there are several other places where you can sign up to volunteer, or if you know a child that's in need, you can put that in on the website, and it's just going to be the name and the grade level, and then that can be followed up on. So the donation link here, one of the key things.
Jonathan, I'm sorry, just for children's names and volunteers' names and all those, it is a secure system.
So this here is the donation money link here. This is tied into the Monroe County Board of Education PayPal, so you can do a one-time donation, or you can make it a monthly donation, so that's really easy for people to share on Facebook and get that out on social media to funnel money into the program. And then we also have some other things along with this program, speaking of donations.
Donation. So we'd like to ask Ms. Bird to please come up. I know that the Board members were working really hard today in meetings, understanding y'all been in here quite a while, but we delivered over 200 pounds of food to Glenn Bird today for Backpack Buddies that various members of the team have raised. And Ms. Bird, I would also like to enjoy the pleasure of giving you a donation in monetary form to help support the program.
We have raised $4,755 for more vegetative.
About volunteers, y'all come to. I'm just, I, Monroe County, y'all just never cease to amaze me. You know, anytime that we ask you anything, I mean, look at what you do, and this is all for our children, and we just don't, we appreciate that so, so very much. These are the children that are the least of us, and as you saw a little while ago, there's great need in Monroe County. We talk about that every, every single day, so we thank you all so very much for everything you do for our children. Thank you for thinking of us. We really, really appreciate that.
You worked with us the whole year. You worked hard on this, too?
(LAUGHING). I cried, really, but I may put my mitts back on. These are two of our volunteers, and then one of our volunteers, Ms. Hogan, was not able to be here with us today, but these ladies hanging out with me every, every single week, and so we thank you all so very much for all the children for our children in Monroe County as well. Speech, speech.
(LAUGHING). Thank everyone, thank you.
But thank you all so much. It's yours now. Okay. Thank you all.
Big one. (APPLAUSE). Just trying to, y'all stay out there, let her get a picture of everybody.
And also have the podium.
Yeah. See everything.
Come on, y'all. Y'all have our usual.
Right there. Right there. Come over to Leadership Monroe, everybody up for a picture. I'm sorry, that's all.
Yeah, come this way, my guys, come in some. Find your window, things here, that's fine. Find your window, you been, I'll see you.
Down, words down.
Right, big smiles, one, two, three, yeah. Keep smiling. Thank you. Just keep smiling. Did he even picture?
Yeah.
We'd also like to thank Dexter Hickman for being our advisor.
Thank you all. Will they take their chicken away? Stuart, y'all take them, take them. Fuck up to the trash.
In, in sharing hack watches for professional learning.
Let's see again. I just wanted to report that we are, again, we are on track with our professional learning plan for our Board of Education. If we could scroll all the way down to our training sessions, just so that you'll know. So today, we have completed our first local board training to fulfill those hour, those six hours of training that we have to have. Our next boardwork session will be on January the 29th. I believe it's on a Wednesday, from 8:30 until 3:30. And then during that training session, we'll review the Code of Ethics, Conflict of Interest and Nepotism Policies. Dr. Julie Allagood, Director of Middle Georgia Risa, will be our facilitator there. Also, we'll spend some time on policy development. And Dr. Greer from Middle Georgia Risa will be our facilitator. We'll also do our GSBA annual self-assessment with our board members. And then here, from there, we'll develop some action sets and plans for the following year. And then Ms. Rooks, who was our Director of Instructional Student Support, she'll be reviewing the multi-tiered system of supports and PBIS on that day. Then our last training date will be on April the 14th, from 2 until 5. And that is where we will review resource adoption, the budget process, personnel process, and then we'll look at our vision, mission and guiding principles during that day. If we need to make any adjustments, we can. But this is our working document with our board training for the rest of the year.
Everybody good?
So January the 29th, so we will not be on a Saturday. Remember, we wanted to move that date, so it's on a Wednesday.
All right, last item, just some reminders. And there's a bunch of them. This is going to be a busy five or six weeks before we get out of school. So actually, starting today, if you hear noise down the hall, Mary Persons is doing their Student Talent Show in Auditorium tonight. So a lot of activity. We jump to a literacy night next week. Winter Art Exhibit will open on November 20th and be open throughout the rest of the semester. Children's Theater for Mary Persons on the 22nd and 23rd, they're doing the Belvedine Rabbit. We'll take a break for Thanksgiving. We are looking at a cold meeting on December the 3rd at 5:30, so we put that as a placeholder in there. Hometown Holidays Christmas Parade with a lot of school events going on, school participation. December 6th and 7th, a new event, Mary Persons is going to do a Christmas cabaret. And so they will be highlighting some, some holiday Broadway plays and music. So make a date to come to one of those. Mary Persons Choral Concert on the 9th, always a highlight. On the 10th, we have a board meeting. And then right after that board meeting, you've got the middle school doing their chorus concert in the Fine Arts Center. You've got a band concert on December the 12th. At noon on the 13th, the State of Education address in the Fine Arts Lobby. And then while that's going on, we'll be preparing for the Tin Tenders event that month. So those tickets are going fast. If you want to see the Tin Tenders on December 13th, grab your tickets. We haven't even advertised and we're three quarters of the way sold out. So if you want to see that performance, it is wonderful. Get your tickets and come. So that's a quick run-through.
Thank you for being patient today before we get to the end of training and the board meeting.
I must apologize for us being seated round back, students. But we had training, bold milk training today and they had these seats turned this way. But we're very sorry. I'm about two weeks old and I can't turn my head around like I did. But we apologize for being seated this way. Now we need a motion to adjourn.
I make that motion.
All in favor of the motion, let it be done by raising your hand and let's go home.
All right, real quick, Mr. Evans has, I mean, Mr. Head has a announcement.
One more thing is when, right after this meeting, all the board members are invited, not required, including Dr. Hickman, to meet at the Masonic Lodge down at the reporter. It's one thing that's mandatory for administrators to be there. There is something that's supposed to happen, so anyway, might be interesting. So we have to be there, thank you. Just right now from the reporter, if you don't know where it is. That's for it.